Like usual, it's pretty much empty in here. The meeting's supposed to start at six o'clock. It's now 6:02. And they're even late for their own meetings. I mean, this, this meeting was posted a year in advance and they're still late for the meeting. Nobody, nobody is here at the meeting. And the agendas are in the back. Just a couple of people here, not many. Here are the unconstitutional quote-unquote guidelines. So what do you think? They're late to their own meeting? These guys, it's posted a year in advance. They know they're supposed to have a meeting today. And they're still late. I think we're waiting. I think we're waiting on some council people to come in, at least one. Because you can't start the meeting. Yeah, it's only four council people are here. They need at least one more. They need at least one more. Yeah, it's only, only four of them right here. Who's gonna be the lucky one to show up? What's up? What's up, Revell? Lieutenant, Captain? You're not Sergeant. Captain, Lieutenant? What, what is he now? Captain? Captain? Some people are rising so fast. I wonder what they're doing. Well, he's not the one that we're waiting for.
Good evening. The municipal council come on meeting on Monday, December 8th, 2025. It is now in session. It's 6:05 PM. And could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And I pledge allegiance to our Constitution, to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll call, please? Councilmember pressure.
Here.
Councilmember coil. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Patel. Oh, he's gonna, okay, sorry. Councilmember Patillo. Councilmember pointer. Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, could you read out a notice? I had a quick notice that's been required by the Open Plug Meeting Act of 1975. It's been provided by the Hennings Center Home Distributing Star Ledger DC12 on November 18th, 2024, and posted in this mal, this mal complex on this ending.
Very much. Council President remarks, Crystal, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. And I want to thank Council Vice President Pointer for filling in. I was able to watch some of the meeting and he did his usual excellent job. Also, I want to encourage people to, we have many vacancies on boards and committees. And I would like to encourage people to, to, to consider applying for some of these committees. I'm looking for the committees. Yes, okay, very good. Thank you, okay. So for the committees that are appointed by council, we have a vacancy on the Ethics Committee. We, and we need a Republican for that particular vacancy. Housing Authority, we have one term that's up for reappointment. But if that person does not apply for reappointment, we certainly would welcome someone to apply. Open Space, the entire board expired in 2024. Zoning, we have three terms up for reappointment. And once again, whether or not these people reapply, we would certainly encourage you to consider applying. Smart City, six terms up for reappointment and one actual vacancy. And finally, Veterans Memorial, there are seven vacancies on the Veterans Memorial Committee. And you know, that's going to be, I think, an important one, especially as we're coming up on the 250th anniversary of this country. I think it's, it's going to be more important than ever. So I would really encourage people, if you want to have a voice, if you really want to be able to make a difference and make a contribution to our community, this is a great way to do it. So I thank you for your attention to that. And with that, let's see. Oh, and the last, the last item is that the ordinance 202268 has to be removed because the newspaper failed to advertise. And I want to thank, in attendance tonight, Joel Bassov for having pointed that out. He had eagle eye to be able to see that and brought it to the attention of Council Clerk. Attorney Burns, did you want to, anything else you want to say about why that needs to be pulled because of?
In order for us to actually pass it, consider it, do anything with it, it's got to be published. Otherwise, it would be people passing.
So it will be put back on the agenda for, for the December 22nd meeting. And with that, we go to unfinished business. Ordinances for further consider, and, oh, and then the other, so ordinances for further consideration, public hearing, and final adoption. We have, we also have an item 2267 that is being pulled. And Council Vice President, can you tell people why this is being pulled?
Thank you, Council President. In short, it was brought to my attention that how the, the wording of the ordinances, in short, it makes the requirement a little too expansive as to when the environmental impact statement would be required. My intention, which has been discussed in the sense of, you know, the intense of ordinances, is that when, when the application gets to the TRC after it's been approved as an application, that's when you would actually be required for the boards to consider. How it is written is that this would be required even before the application was approved or denied. I think that that could have negative impacts widespread around application departments. So I've requested that it be pulled. And I am hopeful, I did send updated language for legal to consider and then for the next council coming up. So I'm hopeful that the next council will take this off. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So the one ordinance that we will be voting on for final adoption tonight is 2266. And Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Maybe by December 22nd I'll get this right, I don't know. Okay, so are there any comments, though, to these ordinances? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the proposed ordinances. And so we have 2269. And 2269 and 2270, any council comments on 2269 for starters?
Council President?
Yes.
Just to leave you in check, I know I sent a plethora of questions. We hope to get those responses before the 22nd. Thank you, Council President.
Any updates on that?
I do, uh, give me one. Um, here actually, yeah, so I will survive those. So conventional. As far as the community center shows private ownership, so we wouldn't have anything.
So can you speak a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
The LTT law and this agreement required, requires an annual audit. So there's an administrative fee built in, an instance agreement with the pilot. One of the focuses really is to pay the NWD or similar financial officers to review and verify the annual growth revenue. The annual service charge, the occurs with the project or person thereof, is officially placed such that it can be occupied for its intended purpose. For example, when the first tenant's moving in, the reassessment. The reassessment would not affect the pilot during that, during those terms. We can, NWD can perform a calculation that you were looking into. There is a type of one of the units, but he believes only two, there's a type of only two of the units. The unit count would be governed by the REA and the redevelopment plan. To be set up, the two of them are in conflict, redevelopment plan governs. But then the answer is not good.
Yeah, there's a couple of other ones. I'm, I'm okay with introducing, but I would like a, of our copy of those responses. Thank you, Council President.
Any other comments or questions on that particular ordinance? Okay, move on to 2270. Any questions or comments on 2270? Seeing on review of the minutes, any comments? November 24th. From Business Administrator, number eight A, the resolution permitting the organization for use of a procurement card. Questions, comments? Number nine, D through G. Number 10, A and B. Eleven, Department of Public Works, A through D.
Council President?
Yes.
Eleven, B and C, these are final amendments for Edison Courts two and three?
Yes.
This is our, what is our warranty for this work? How long, how many, how many years?
The warranty is issued for two years, not one more time.
Anything else? Twelve from Township Clerk, A and B. All right, we move into the regular meeting. Hopefully, I'll get it right. All right, so we go, we go to the approval of the minutes for November 24th. I would be abstaining, I was not here. So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're back to the ordinances for further consideration. And we are looking at 2266. Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance amended chapter 25 trees by amending subsections 25 dash 6 dot 1, extensions from tree replacement.
Okay, open it for the public for any, any comments or questions about this ordinance? Yes?
Joel Bassov, Beach Lane. Glad to see that the township is going to be more stringent in protecting Edison's tree cover and tree pathing. Good job.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else want to comment on or question this ordinance? Motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public.
Second.
Twenty, twenty-two sixty-eight?
Thank you. Sorry?
Twenty-two sixty-eight?
Twenty, twenty-two sixty-six. The ordinance. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thanks. And roll call, please? Councilmember pressure.
Yes.
Councilmember coil.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember pointer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes.
Councilmember now. So for, for 2267, in order to, we're, we are removing that. Do we need to do anything with that? No, is that, is that being tabled?
It's not being tabled. It's being pulled from the agenda entirely, so you don't have to do anything.
All right. For 2268, that is being tabled to the 22nd week. Do we need to make a motion in order to do so, correct? All right, so can I get a motion to table ordinance 2268 to the December 22nd meeting?
Council President? I motion to table it until Monday, December 22nd.
Thank you, second please.
Second.
Thank you. And can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember pressure.
Yes.
Councilmember coil.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Patillo. Councilmember pointer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes.
Council President Harris. Yes. All right, we move on to the new business of the ordinance 2269. And Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance?
Ordinance approving the application for long-term exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Fairway Country Club Urban Renewal LLC concerning the property known as proposed block 412, block 5.04, commonly known as 1000 Inman Avenue.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to introduce?
I motion to introduce.
Yeah, I think this one needs to be, yeah. And we don't have a chief here. You just got to tell me that one, isn't it?
Thanks for that.
Now, Council President. I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading, published according to law for further consideration and public hearing set down for December 22nd, Monday.
Explained, explained. Can I get a second, please? Okay, second. We're gonna have to stay up for class.
Second.
Thank you, okay. Can I, can I get council comments? Any council comments on this ordinance?
Uh, Council President? I did have some questions. This is the one with the country, yes. I did have some questions that I did ask the administration, whether the need for the pilot, also how you're gonna alleviate the burden there. If any revenues that you are taking away from them. And I'm looking forward to those answers, but I am looking for instructions.
I could forward it to both councils, councilmen and Council Vice President. So with respect to the concept of the loss of revenue from schools, it's, it's a bit, I guess it's, it could be taken in account. So the board has a budget funded, the money is deducted from school because of a new project coming along which had not contributed any revenue in the first place. So it's just not taking the revenue from the school. In addition, this project will not add any school spending.
Any other council comments or questions? Can we get a roll call? Councilmember pressure.
Yes.
Councilmember coil.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember pointer.
Yes, then introduce.
Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes, introduce.
Council President Harris.
Yes, introduce.
And 2270, Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article 5, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Agencies, except for two, administration of the municipal code.
Thank you. Once again, any, oh, can I get a motion to introduce?
Council President? I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading, published according to law for further consideration and in public hearing set down from Monday, December 22nd, 2025.
Thank you, I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any council comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, we get a roll call. Councilmember pressure.
Yes.
Councilmember coil.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember pointer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes.
Council President Harris.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now we go.
Council President?
Yes.
Just point of order, I'd like to revisit 2268 and make a motion to put this back on the agenda.
So what happened is that the ordinances were sent to the newspaper for the required publication. The newspaper apparently did not publish that ordinance, so we can't actually move forward with it tonight, which applies being moved to the past.
Okay, I didn't have the reason.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I didn't hear that comment before, I apologize. All right, we move to public comment on the resolutions, resolutions only. Any public comment? Yes, Joel.
Joel Bassov, Beach Lane. Can we get some background information on resolution? The one pertaining to the purchase of a new garbage collection truck?
Do you have a number on that?
Hold on. Yeah, it's 673.
Okay.
First of all, it's, it seems like a lot of money, over a third of a million dollars for one vehicle. And I was just wondering why we need to purchase one at this point. As far as I know, we haven't expanded our garbage collection district. So I'd just like some information as to why the township is purchasing a garbage truck and how competitive is that price for vehicles of that nature?
Any other questions?
Second.
Okay, all right, so.
Sure, so this replaces actually an old logo. So this is part of our general capital replacement program.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions only?
Yep, yep. Thank you. Am I recognized? Thank you. Before I get on the resolution, ordinance 2270 was never on the posted agenda.
We're not, we can't talk about the ordinances now, it's following, it's following the resolutions.
I'll, I'll come back to it, but it wasn't on the posted agenda and he voted for it, it's illegal, so. I didn't know it was a combined meeting. I was ready to record the comments at the start. So no meeting Wednesday? It's done today? Well, just on the last one, R675, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to, through the chair, to Councilman pressure on that one. And you too, but no one else listens, so I'll talk to yous too. So on R675, you're authorizing a permit fee waiver to St. James Church for hot water heater? That's the white church? The white church on Woodbridge Avenue? Okay, well, I hope we start, we start buying things for, for all the other churches in Edison too, not just St. James Church. This is a good start. Wave all fees? Why, why is this the only, only church on here? It's the only one that needs the water heater at the moment.
Yes, that's exactly why.
All right. Well. Okay. Well, 2270 wasn't on the agenda, he voted for it, so I want to see what you guys are gonna do about that, how you're gonna fix that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else on the resolutions?
No, no, no.
Motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public part. Second.
Thank you. All right, so we go to the resolutions, and do we have anything to pull for a separate vote? Councilman coil, Councilman pressure, anything to pull for a separate vote on the resolutions?
No, Council President, okay, just make a comment on the garbage truck.
Sure.
Just for a point of information, it's being purchased through the co-op. And the co-op is generally very competitive in terms of their pricing because of the, you know, buying in the, in the fund it is from several municipalities and such. Any clients that I've researched, retail prices versus co-op prices, it's always been competitive. And in terms of the turnover of vehicles, I've seen some of the conditions of our older vehicles, it's needed. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, so nothing to pull for a separate vote? And which case, we then are needing a, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda 660 through 675.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please? Councilmember pressure.
Yes.
Councilmember coil.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember pointer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmuel.
Yes.
Council President Harris.
Yes.
Okay, we move on to oral petitions and remarks. Yes, Joel.
Joel Bassov, Beach Lane. I want to comment on the salary ordinance. I understand that it was removed from tonight's agenda because public notice wasn't published, but it's going to come up at a subsequent meeting. And my suggestion is that the item pertaining to the mayor's salary be severed from the ordinance pertaining to public officials. We all understand that township employees might be entitled to cost of living or longevity increases. But when it comes to the salary for the mayor, it's not a good look for lame duck council to be approving a 32% $48,000 salary increase for a mayor right after the election. The last time that the mayor's salary was increased, it was Councilman pressure who pointed out that when you're considering a salary increase for the mayor, it's not supposed to be for the person, it's supposed to be for the office. So my question would be, what has changed about the office of Mayor of Edison to justify such a massive increase barely three years after the previous increase? If it was truly for the office and not for the person, then the issue of a salary increase would have been put on the agenda before the election so that whoever might be elected to that office would get the increase. That's the way the state does it for the governor. We're proposing an increase of the mayor's salary to 190. We're proposing an increase of the mayor's salary to $198,000. The governor of New Jersey, a state of nine and a half million people, currently gets only $175,000 to run the entire state. And that's gonna be going up for the next governor to $210,000. Governor Murphy did not give himself a raise. The legislature authorized a raise for whoever might be elected to that office because it was supposed to pertain not to the person, but to the office. And I'd like to know how anyone could justify that the office of the mayor of Edison calls for a salary that's almost as much as the office of Governor of New Jersey. And if this goes through, then the mayor of Edison is gonna be getting a salary that's higher than the mayor of any other township in New Jersey. It'll be probably maybe the third highest mayoral salary in the entire state. So my suggestion would be that if you truly believe that there's something now in 2025 about the office of the mayor of Edison that calls for a raise of that magnitude, then maybe wait until before the next election so that it can be part of the agenda of whoever's running for mayor that, well, this is something that Edison needs and requires. Otherwise, doing it this way, it just likes, looks like a blatant greedy money grab by the incumbent. And it looks like the council is just being puppets of the incumbent. And it's not a good look for the council or for the mayor. So please consider when the ordinance is up for adoption, sever that part of it and consider it separately. So my final question is, if you can answer it, what do you think has changed about the office of the mayor that justifies such a massive increase?
Let me just address a couple of points. First of all, I'm not crazy about the timing of this either. To be pushed into the very, the second to last meeting of the, and was now the last meeting of the, of this council is, I would have preferred that it would have come on earlier. So I agree with you with that. However, just by comparison, Mayor McCormick of Woodbridge makes over $200,000 as a full-time mayor. And Mayor Joshi is a full-time mayor. Now, the salary increase that he got before was when this position, he went to full-time. And so he is just simply being, and going to, I think it's 199,000, something like that, is putting him on par if you're gonna do apples to apples with a township of a similar size. And it's going to put him on par with that particular mayor. So, and to the puppet thing, I don't consider myself a puppet on this. I personally am in favor of this. I think it makes sense in view of making the comparison to what Mayor McCormick makes in Woodbridge Township with the same, basically the same population. So those are my comments on it. Yeah, Councilwoman Foyle?
Does he finish with his questions?
Are, where are you finishing?
My time's up.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I follow the rules.
Council President, I couldn't agree with you anymore. Thank you for supporting the mayor's salary increase. Let's face it, beginning doesn't change. You're quite aware, we've had part-time mayors forever who've had multiple jobs with this part-time job, which now is a full-time job. It's, most people believe that this mayor's done a great job. There's a lot going on in his department, he's involved full-time, he has no other job. This is his full-time job. And I'd say he has a full-time job here and a part-time job here. He's here a lot, he's available, he's all the council here and every department. Aside from infrastructure, sewer, water, emergency response, snow maintenance, he's up day and night for that. Let's face it, everything's heated out, garbage trucks, snow trucks, apple oil, blizzard. He's available for the township. Public safety, we've increased our staff in public safety, increased the fire department. He's in on every meeting. He's in on every meeting, the directors, DPW, Parks Department. It, there's been significant involvement from mayor to fore. And we are very hopeful and thankful of all the mayors who brought us to this point. But no mayor has been full-time. And Mayor Joshi has proven that time management matters. Look at all the accomplishments we've had so far. Turf fields, right? We put the splash park, we improved all 29 parks. I mean, the list goes on and on. It's justifiable. I'm fine with him making $275,000. He's running a $200 million company, he's handling all our bonds, consulting, refinancing in our finance department, and 1,000 employees. I think it's very fair what the mayor gets considering this is his sole responsibility. And I'm grateful, and I'm really truly happy for those who are listening and for the residents who are watching right now, you're giving your value. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council President. Yes.
Just two remarks on my end. One, if you just go based on CPI inflation, the, one of the original ordinances back in 93, the mayor's salary was 75,000, right? Adjusted for inflation from 93 to today, that'd be 170,000. Now, you asked what's the difference is from before versus now? Like personally, I've been on site to see the extracurricular stuff that happened. So for example, when the Wooderman break is there, you know, I met out, I met him out there 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night to like see what was actually going on. This is not just like the 95 job. It is something that is constant, there's disruptions on it, it's not a typical type of position. So that's why I personally am in a different room. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Joel. Yes, Sue.
Hi, everyone, Sumala Waterberg, President of the House. I also have comments on ordinance 2268. And, well, I'll just read what I put down. In 2022, when we moved to a full-time mayor, we doubled the salary, completely, $250,000. Completely reasonable and understandable. Now, within just four years, we are raising the salary another 32%. I'm not sure how we justify that. Nobody gets a 32% increase for doing the same job. So I ask, why do taxpayers of Edison need to support such an increase? With this proposed increase, the cost to the taxpayers for our mayor will have increased 132% in four years. The salary for the mayor of Edison will be more than the mayors of Newark and Patterson, whose populations are triple Edison's. And he's very close, he will be very close to Jersey City, which is also triple. So I'm wondering why Woodbridge was the only measure. Edison taxpayers will be paying almost as much for our mayor as the entire state of New Jersey pays for the governor. The governor's salary going into next year will be 210,000, just 12,000 more than Edison mayor. I appreciate that the job is not an easy job. But I also appreciate that when one is applying for a job, if they don't like the salary, they don't accept the position. So let's, let's, um, let's talk about, there is an argument to be made that there has been no cost of living increases. That's perfectly acceptable. I was in business, had a big job for a major corporation. And we gave cost of living increases every year, from between 2% and 5%. If someone was extraordinary, 7%. If they got a promotion, 10%. So let's do some math with those percentages. If we had increased the mayor's salary range by giving a generous 5% cost of living increase over the last four years, the compounded increases each year would bring the salary to $160,000 going into 2026. Even if we had given an unheard of 10% cost of living over the last four years, every year over four years, the salary would only be 177,000 going into 2026. A salary increase of $50,000, $48,000 in four years is just way out of whack. Nobody gets that kind of raise for the same job. As stewards of our money, please explain how the justification for increasing the taxpayer burden is by such a large amount? And why is there no top range on the salary? Where all the other salaries have top ranges? I feel personally it's irresponsible to do this, especially in this economy when affordability is on everybody's mind. Other questions I have are, again, why were these increases part of the budget process? And why don't we factor in cost of living increases? So it's not like this one, kind of a made-up number compared to a neighboring township. One township. The highest populated towns are Newark, in this order, Newark, Jersey City, Patterson, three times the size of Edison. Elizabeth, then Edison, then Woodbridge. So I feel like the, it's not, not really justified.
Thank you.
And I ask you to think long and hard about it before just rubber stick. Thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. The four municipalities, as she mentioned before here, are different form of government. They are all cities. They are not townships. So they have different-
I would argue the jobs a lot harder. Excuse me.
I just wanted to add with regard to the budget, we do have, we do split the cost of living adjustments.
That's right, budget.
So budget is-
Yeah.
The cost of living adjustments are in the budget.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Every, we do budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Thomas Lucky, November circle. I'd like to talk to, shed a little bit of light on ordinance 2269, which is the, I call it the driving range off of Inman Avenue, 1,000 Inman Avenue. I tried reading the ordinance, or the attachment to the council agenda this evening, and there's no term, there's no term shown as for tax exemption. Excuse me if I'm, excuse my ignorance. But how long is that supposed to go on? Also, it's kind of vague and ambiguous on how it's written. Even an attachment, the attachment I think is missing from the support documents that were, that was in, that was in the follow-up information on the council agenda. But that area, to put two, it says two five-story buildings plus a community center. That's, it took, I live across the street from that area. It took me over five minutes just to pull out onto Inman Avenue to come over, to come to the meeting this evening. The, which also took me half an hour to get from Inman Avenue to, door to door, you know, to get to the meeting, getting a couple of lights green, actually, you know. So, I mean, you talk about improving quality of life, you talk about, you know, making things better. It's gonna put, putting those two five-story office buildings, however large or small they may be, you're gonna, you're taxing the infrastructure. I know there's gonna be a traffic, a traffic study done. And I know how people manipulate numbers. And it's gonna be just like when they first did the Costco over there and they said, that's not gonna really, it's not gonna really be a hardship. It's just, you know, your roads are gonna be overtaxed, your, your complete infrastructure, water, store, power, gas, et cetera, gonna all be taxed. Schools, if I don't, it doesn't say anything about age restricted or that, the schools are gonna be overcrowded. Then you're gonna get the knock-on effect of building, of building additions to the schools, et cetera. Talks about a community center. Is that for the complex or is that for Edison? There's, it's, it's written in such generalities that it's, it's hard to understand, you know, in my simple mind, how it's, how it's, how it's actually going to be. I would just, you know, please take that into consideration when you think about that. Talking about salaries, let's just throw this out for a little food for thought. You know, you pass a comment, Mayor McCormick makes, you know, X amount of dollars a year. And Mayor Joshi's not making that. Well, maybe, maybe Mayor McCormick, not saying he is, maybe he's overpaid. Anybody think about that? We, let's talk about controlling costs. And I think you're just like, you're letting, you're, you're opening yourselves up to where salaries are gonna go up, 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 up. You know, in the, early on in the, in the years, the private and public sector jobs, the salaries were pretty low, right? And the benefits made up for it, made up for the low salaries. Right now, they're getting the best of both worlds. We need to be, we need to be responsible in how we spend our taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Just a point of clarification for you, that these units on Inman are going to be, I believe, 55 and older units. Okay? Anyone else?
Council President.
Yes.
Can I just address a couple other questions?
Sure.
As far as the term of the pilot program as proposed, it'd be a 30-year program. The attachments that are missing, we, we get those attachments. Many of those are application documents that have items of confidentiality, for lack of better words, that are included on there. So that would be my understanding as to why it's not published, you know, for everyone to see. In terms of what's, like, just the development of the land, it's one of the largest contaminated pieces of land in the township. So that's one of the reasons why the request for the pilot program is there is because there's going to be a lot of remediation costs associated with it on top of the actual development cost. Additional traffic, any development that, that goes there is going to have a traffic impact on that, on Inman. In terms of size of the structures, that's guided by the redevelopment plan that was approved, that says like the buffers, the height maximums, all of that stuff. Well, that answered some of your questions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Council President.
Yes.
There was also the question that similar to you I had regarding to whether or not this pilot was necessary. And it was answered that without this pilot, we would not have this, a delighted regulated spot to be built on. And it's important because as of right now, we're not getting much revenue from that spot. Now with this pilot project, hopefully you can convert that project into something that helps the rest of the residents have, as well make it sort of more useful, like. Also, in terms of, as it is a pilot and it is age restricted, there will not be any kids going into schools. So that should not be an issue that we should be worried about in this particular project. So yeah, I think there is some benefits that we are getting. Obviously, there will be some downsides due to the traffic. But that is something that we have to balance in the long term. Thank you.
Just by comparison, the project that's going up and it's almost finished on New Durham, no, on Durham, I'm sorry, in the touch-in, where the old Gooten property is huge. And that is not age restricted. And I am very concerned about what the traffic is gonna look like there because, and what, and that's gonna be the touch-ins problem, but then the school situation as well. But for that stretch of New Durham, I mean of Durham, it's, this, I see a nightmare happening. So that point is certainly well-taken. But I think given the differences in the populations, I think this is not going to be quite as, quite as much of a, having as much of an impact as it will in the touch-in situation.
Council President. Yeah, I just want to add to the property just discussed. I think as long as I know about deal, that property's been sitting for 30 years plus. We have a property that has an environmental issue, unknown, that could impact the environment and the surrounding neighbors. Finally, there's an investor wanting time and energy to clean it up. It sat for 30 years. I think I remember in the Comer administration, was it VSCO, some, the VSCO one, or something? Does that sound right? It went that, that far. So finally today, someone has taken the risk of putting money into a project to make it- to make it for the common good, which is for fifty-five and up, which I think is great. We argue, we don't want kids in the school system, they're giving us that. Because some argue, we want a pilot, we're, they're giving us that. I think it's a win-win. I mean, for a property that just sat forever on fifty-six today, I think I knew about that property in my twenties. That's how long. I don't want to, I don't want to say how old the councilman's deal is, but it goes back that far, probably further than the time I'm talking today. So, uh, you know, their risk-takers, God bless them, if they can get it done, I think it's a wonderful commitment for the town to finally see a property come together. No different than the property on Plainfield Avenue, which, when I first met, uh, the clerk, was Mado next to me, we volunteered to clean up that site in nineteen ninety-five. This administration today finally has cleaned up that site, it's proved to be something great. It sat forever. Who talked about it from this council, or anybody who showed up? Nobody. Nobody complained that it just sat there abandoned. I don't think of ever a current complaint about it. So, it's, it's wonderful to see some things finally coming together. Only moving forward to, uh, more things happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman. Yes?
Just wanted to add one point. If we developed that property thirty years ago, we would have, over time, thirty million dollars added to our budget that we potentially lost that. So, that's a significant amount of change that we could use for the residents.
Thank you. Pardon? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Am I recognized?
You're recognized.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna speak to you, Margot Harris, I'll speak to you, I'll speak to Councilman Bresser, maybe Revell and, and, and the chief, maybe they can too as well. Um, who approved the funding for the new private bathroom in the mayor's office with his own private shower? I'd like to know that. Um, why hasn't the mayor came out and made a statement about what happened? A kill, kill list at Thomas Jefferson Middle School? Why hasn't he come out with the threat that came out at Middlesex County College? And people wanna, are, are asking, are the two connected? People wanna know. Um, he could at least came out with some kind of message of calm. He didn't want to do that. Uh, and you guys want to give him a raise? I'm against the mayor, and you guys giving him a raise, the same people that are gonna vote to give him a raise are the same people that voted to ban the American flag? Yes, you did ban the American flag, Councilman Coell, because he banned props, and you guys insinuated and said that people waving the American flag, that's a prop, and they were thrown out. You threw out Joel Bassoff, you threw out two, uh, senior citizen, uh, women. One of them used to be on the council, so it goes to show, hey, you guys don't even respect yourselves. Shame on you guys for throwing out Joyship Freeman. That, that really did not need to happen. Uh, there's no excuse for that. But again, you weren't throwing people out because of the American flag. You, you threw those people out because at the time, you were targeting me. You never targeted the American flag, you never targeted props. Councilman Bresser, they were targeting me the whole, the whole entire time. We know this. And Joel Bassoff and the other two ladies, they got caught in the net. And it's a shame they got caught in the net, uh, especially Joyship Freeman. Um, you guys should apologize to them for that. Uh, but the public safety director, Councilman Bresser, created a public safety risk when, when, how many people came in here from out of state? Some of them came in here, um, trying to sell ghost guns, three-D guns. And that wasn't my doing, I think that was the doing of you guys and the way you guys came after me. I'll, I'll talk to, uh, Revell right now. Uh, if you see what's going on in Westfield, or I don't know what's that other town that they're going to those council meetings, doing that stupid shit, and they're getting kicked out with dance, and they're doing every stupid shit imaginable, okay? And they're allowed to do it because they're, they're, they're put through a lawsuit. Why were you guys coming after me for the mask? People go all across America, they wear costumes, and they go to the meetings. I mean, you guys knew this. But you guys had to gaslight me the entire year, okay? Um, think about it. If what you did to Joyship Freeman, one of your own, she's one of you guys, a few later, few years later down the line, that's gonna be done to you, Margot, or you, Joe. You know, difference is, I hope it gets done to you, Joe. Um, and yeah, I'm disgusted, I'm disgusted in himself giving himself a raise, he doesn't deserve it. Uh, he hasn't done nothing. And when we had part-time mayor Tom Lankey, he did a lot more than Mayor Sam Joshi. Every resident that came for an appointment, he saw them, he respected them, he had courtesy, you understand, he had compassion, everything. Mayor Joshi has none of it. He's a tyrant.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Um, anyone else? Right? Any motion to close?
Motion to close, pardon, portion.
Okay, just second.
Second.
Um, all right, we move to the, to the council members, the planning board.
I'm sorry, nothing to read. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, reports from all council committees.
No one's gonna answer my questions?
From my right, uh, Councilman Bresser? Uh, Councilman Coell?
Nobody answers my questions.
I'm attending a meeting with DPW to discuss the, uh...
I'm not a human.
yearly planning for two thousand and twenty-six. We also had a slight discussion, like we have every year, um, about being prepared for the snow. And, uh, we are prepared, salt trucks, snow plows, um, and, uh, truck power and also staff power. So, very, very pleased to be prepared for the snow when and if it comes. Thank you.
Uh, Council Vice President?
Not this time.
Councilman Teteau?
Not this time.
And Councilman Coell?
Not this time.
All right. For myself, the, um, the animal shelter, uh, again, a very productive month in November. Adopted were thirty-three felines, eighteen canines. Reclaimed by their owners were three felines and thirteen canines. Here in the shelter, and I think this is actually, for the canines, it's less than, there were two dogs that were adopted over the weekend. So, but as of November, it was thirteen canines that are stolen sheltered and thirty-four felines in the shelter. So, I just want to say that, um, I, I am so proud of the shelter. I think they've been doing a wonderful job, and they've been, they've been really cooking. So, I'm, I'm very happy to have been liaison to them, and they've been a wonderful, a wonderful job. Uh, thank you. And we now, oh, and the, um, Cultural Arts Commission did not meet this month because we did not have a forum. The next meeting will be January sixth. I'm hoping at that point, I will no longer be liaison, I'm hoping I will become a permanent member, or a, a regular member of that commission. Um, we go to points of light. Uh, let me just start with, um, a few announcements. Holiday house decorating contest registered by December tenth through Edison Recreation. Judgment will take place on December twelfth, six to nine P.M. Winners will be announced on December fifteenth. Do you know what the prices are? Anyone know what the prices are for this? All right. Um, December twelfth, Edison Recreation alone, that is a visionary, annual holiday ads for teens and adults with disability, six-thirty P.M. at Mini B Veal. December thirteenth, the Winter Wonderland at Papiani Park, four to eight-thirty P.M. at Treeless Free, tons of winter activities to enjoy. December sixteenth, the Lighting of the Minor at the JCC on Oak Tree Road, starting at seven P.M. And December twentieth, Parents Night Out, five to nine P.M. at Mini B, Mini B Veal, ten dollars per child, grade K through five, pre-registration required by December seventeenth. Uh, anyone else for any points of light? Is that the same? Okay, okay. Oh, oh, there's also, uh, there's Community Health Assessment to participate in, in our anonymous survey by January sixteenth. You can, oh, there's this long, I mean, there's, there's this, um, code that you can scan. Um, otherwise, there's, uh, this is a long, this is a very long H D P S. It's on, so it's on the website, so you can scan the QR code, um, or you can just go on the website. So, it's Community Health Assessment, uh, which I, I would, I, I already took part in this, but I would, I would encourage people to take part in this. Um, with that, any other points of light? All right. We move on to discussion items. Um, we, let's go to you, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. The only item for resident concerns, um, residents on Broward Avenue were saying that there's still speeding occurring from the, uh, school buses, bad traversing to go the back way to Harbor Hoover. So, if we can just communicate a little bit of order there on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Council President. Okay. Anyone else here? No one else besides myself is on here? Anyone else wanted to add anything to council discussion items? Thanks, Nina. For myself, we removed, I removed the proposed ordinance about council salaries, and I gave this long and hard thought. This again, being given to us at the end of the year was not exactly something I had an appetite for. And, and also, given that Councilman Teteau, Council Vice President Pointer, and myself are no longer going to be on council as of January first, um, we didn't feel comfortable having this put in our laps. For myself, I can only speak for myself on this, I really wrestle with this because the proposal is for what is close to a hundred percent increase in the council salaries. And I have a hard time justifying that. I, I don't have a problem with a raise in the council salaries, but, but a, a, almost hundred percent raise is just something that I have a hard time with. And again, I know, I'm gonna use Woodbridge as a, as a comparison, which, while the mayor is, is making, as I said, about two-hundred thousand dollars, council there is making maybe fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. And they probably, they should be, they should be making more. But I just have a hard time, and I especially have a hard time, and I find it, I guess, I would use the word arrogant, that this council, the same council who took away one-third of the public speaking time would be getting a hundred percent increase in their salary. I have a very, very hard time justifying that. So, we, so we are, we are not going to be voting on this during this council, and the future council can take this up if they so desire. But this is why, this, this is why it was decided to remove this particular ordinance. That's all I have to say. Um, with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, people who celebrate, and we can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.